Thank you all for being here. This is a special call meeting of the B County Commissioners' Court. We're located at the B County Courthouse, Commissioners' Court Room 110, 105 West Corpus Christi Street, Beville, Texas, 102. This is official call to order. Before we have our prayer, I would like to do a moment of silence for the family of Darian Tyler Estrada, who was tragically killed last week. So if you'll join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Mr. Estrada was the daughter of Candy Estrada, the county judge's administrative assistant. So Ms. Mosser, I think you have a prayer for us, ma'am? Everyone will stand for the prayer.
Almighty God, we put you in charge of our deliberations today. We list every item on the agenda for your scrutiny. Guide us in the decisions that match your will to be done here as it is in heaven. In these days, when we freely judge and condemn each other, remind us all of the great judgments, which we all may face someday. Help us to really hear and learn from each other so that voices in our community are heard and felt heard. Remind us that only your comments of "Well done, my good and faithful servant" will afford peace and everlasting happiness. Help us to bring about a beloved, safe, happy, healthy community here in this corner of your world. Show us how to be role models others might aspire to be. Hold us in your graces and keep us kind. Amen.
Amen, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the honor of the flag, I pledge allegiance to the integrity of one state, under God, one nation.
This is the point in time on our agenda where we recognize visitors. This is not a time to sit and talk in discussion, but if anybody is out there that says I'd like y'all to recognize who I am, this is your chance. If you're on the agenda, we'll have a time for you in a minute, but this is your last chance now to be recognized this morning right here in Commissioners' Court. Go on live. Thank you. Now we have Commissioners' Court open remarks that way.
I'll go ahead and start. First of all, Commissioner, thanks for recognizing the enforcement event that happened to Candy. We appreciate that. Very, very sad event. Can't imagine what's going to happen. And as far as recognition, I'd like to recognize Candy. Last week, she assisted me on placing a few items on the agenda. Also, I'd like to recognize Dolores for stepping up to the plate and backfilling for Candy while she was out. Ray received a bunch of kudos for some road repairs throughout the precinct four area. So he got some good kudos from the residents. As far as some general information, I held a town hall meeting on March the 15th with the appraisal district, which was a pretty good success. Turnout was great. One of the outcome was lack of understanding on how to protest taxes. So we're going to have another town hall meeting to educate the people on how they can file a protest. Last week, I attended a county management and risk conference. Great learning experience. I think everyone should have attended that. I had a few others from our large team here at the courthouse that attended. In Tynan, we responded to concerns of a falling tree and water leak in the utility right-of-way access. Ray had noticed that a street sign had fallen, and he got his team to install it the next day. So Ray, thank you for doing that quick response. I guess the questions of the court doesn't have to be answered today. I'm trying to figure out who actually has the ownership of right-of-ways or accessways and who cleans them, who takes responsibility for anything that happens. I don't know if that's the county that has that or is it someone else? Don't know.
That's Ray Gonzalez's question.
But we'll figure that one out. Because we do have a lot of accessways that probably need a little bit of attention maybe. And then this particular tree happened to be falling through one of those categories. So I'll figure that one out. We had a resident that had some concerns about some drainage on County Road 537. We cleaned out some pipe ends to enhance the drainage. So that went well. And Skidmore had an opportunity to participate in a trash pickup on Corrigan Road. So recognition to Dora Henhouse for coordinating with Mr. Jason Woods with the 36, 156, and 343 judicial district adult probation. And we also had some volunteers that assisted. Also, I'd like to recognize Mr. and Mrs. Nathan Kins for providing roadside water stand and other items to eat there. So appreciate that. That's great to do that. Trash was picked up on more than two miles of Corrigan Road despite of the cold and rain. But like mailmen, we did it all. So also, thanks to Ray for assisting on getting the debris picked up. Also, there was some trash that we picked up at the Dollar General. I don't know where these diapers are coming from, Commissioners, but I picked up about 100 of them, and there's more on the ground now. So it's mind-boggling. So I'll pick them up again. You might have to put a camera out there or something. I don't know if that's constitutional anymore or not, but anyhow. The other thing I did, had a great field trip with Ray. We inspected a lot of county roads and to see where we could take action on help enhancing some of the road condition. Most of them are actually pretty good, but things aren't real well. So Ray, thank you for taking time out of your busy day to do that. That's it?
All right. I'll start off with the BISD Golden Trojan breakfast that they provided at the high school, which was great. I got my official pass to get into all the games because I'm getting almost there. And that was real good. They had the culinary students provide us breakfast, and it was great. It was really good. Next item is the... I shot and participated in the Beville Education Foundation's speech Saturday. Well-attended, 30 teams, lots of folks. They raised a lot of money for the foundation. So that was really good. Let's see the next one. I spoke to our grant writer for our GLO projects coming up. They are sending out surveyors, or they sent out notices and surveyors for Silver Creek in the 631 area. So I think they've already advised the sheriff's office that they might have a few calls with people driving around out there asking or knocking on doors. So we've got that going. The Pettis one, they didn't attack because they think this one's going to be a little tougher to get. So Silver Creek and 631 is what they're going to go first. Then they'll go to Pettis. Next item, let me see. Texas Air on the sheriff's office was supposed to hook up some ductwork. Apparently, the ductwork was the wrong size. They re-boarded it. It's coming in this coming week, and they should be done by Friday. So that'll complete the job on top of the jail and sheriff's office. So that'll get that there. Lanconia Fire Department. It's already in FEMA's hands again for the partial payment so we can order our material for their new fire department. And that's been going off to Turbine Park. So that's moving forward. I had two calls. One was a dump trash on County Road 404. Mr. Guerrero took care of that. Thank you, sir. And then another one on the corner of Dickerson Road and Car Road. And that was potholes that just, you know, the road got tore up there. And then Roden Bridge took care of that. Thank you, Mr. Ray. Appreciate that. And with that, I'll pass. I've got with Texas on some issues. I had some calls on 351 and 673 that, you know, we as the citizens have pretty much turned that shoulder into a turning lane to go down 673. And they're going to do like they did at 181 and 351, where they put the little barricades on the shoulders so people can't actually use that as a turning lane. It's the shoulder. If you have to turn there, and if someone in the proper lane was to turn and have an accident, it's your fault for being in the shoulder and not on a turning lane. Then on Oak Lane and 81, I got the phone to the Semte this morning. There's this big old mesquite tree that it's dangerous. Someone's going to have an accident coming out of Oak you can't see. And they're going to get that tree taken care of completely and take it out all the way, trimming it up. Friday, went out and did a ride-alongs at the sheriff's office. That's always exciting and fun. This next Saturday, we're going to have a deal at Pavilion at Coliseum. And what it is for is the main purpose of it is to recognize a young man here, one of our local guy, Jacob Guerrero, who is an MMA fighter, undefeated at that. And what we want to do is raise money for Driscoll Children's Hospital. So this next Saturday, we're having a deal at the Pavilion. We're going to have food to sell, games for kids, games for adults, car shows, just different things to draw people out there to raise money for Driscoll Children's Hospital. That's one of Jacob's aspirations. He wants to be a big man towards the kids and helping out, especially like it's like Driscoll, you know, where we have a lot of people from Beville that do use Driscoll. So that's a good deal. That's going to be this Saturday from 12 to 5 there at the Pavilion. So if you guys ain't doing anything, come on out. That's about it, other than, you know, picking up some trash here and there. And with this rain, of course, you know, to break out the lawnmowers. And what we are doing, some major cleaning projects. We've got some planning on the books. So come June 19th through the 30th, we will have... I got with Teresa Cog and with the help of Robbie. We are going to have them bring out three big roll-offs. It's going to be specifically for Blueberry Hill. And two of those roll-offs will be for trash and whatnot. One will be for tires. And so it's going to be a major effort in trying to get that cleaned up out there so that people can go and they can put their stuff in the roll-off at no charge. And if they need help, of course, we'll provide people to help them do that. Some things are too heavy or whatnot. So that's not going to be until June 19th to the 30th. So we're looking forward to that happening and getting that area cleaned up at least an effort to, you know. That's it. I'll pass back to you. Thank you, sir.
Commissioners, very good information. Very good. Been pretty busy. The bus stop in Mineral is fully operational. Commissioner Lenny read some things, and I appreciate that. There are reflectors now on the pillars. People are using it. It's doing good. We're pondering whether to put lights on it or not. The local people have asked me to hold off until we know for sure that we need them. So we're waiting to hear back from the bus drivers and all. Do you think you really need them? If they don't, we won't put them on. They want to keep that as pristine as they can. The judge and I both are on the Council of Government's Executive Board, and I didn't realize what all they did down there and how many millions and millions and millions of dollars that they dispersed all over the coastal bend. We've been meeting. I met three times in Corpus in the last week and a half, and one meeting in Centon. The meeting in Centon was for elected officials. There were probably 18 educators, if you will, from those counties in Centon. And the workforce information that they hold in their hands is awesome. I was presented with quite a few business cards. I got copies of those to Randy Seitz with our NBDA. And he was going to contact them because they have tentacles into all the colleges. And the Council of Government funds multi-million dollars in these colleges that I didn't realize. And we're on that board, and we can kind of... We know where the money is now. Let's just leave it at that. And we're probably going to be able to help the sheriff's office, and we're working now to help elections. I think you probably got a call from the 911 people trying to get you tied in with their information. Hopefully, that'll work out. So it's been very productive, a lot of driving, a lot of work, a lot of time. But it's good. Roden Bridge, we can't say enough about Roden Bridge. I got a call a few days ago about a tree. They had a little storm up in North Beach County. Blew a tree down on County Right-of-Way. Everything inside the fence line is County Right-of-Way. You can almost stand in the middle of a road and figure 30 feet on each side, that's all ours. Anyway, he asked me what to do with it. And I said, "Well, it was on a weekend." I said, "Look." He said, "I'm willing to get my tractor and move it off to the side." I said, "Man, that's great. Just push it out of the road so it'll be out of the road and it won't damage anything." And I said, "We'll get to it when we can." I went by there Saturday. He did a good job putting it next to his high fence. It's totally out of the way. It's not any kind of a hazard. And I know Roden Bridge will get it when they can, but it's not any kind of a priority. When we have citizens helping us out like that, because we can't be everywhere all the time. But if you see something like that, and I've done it myself, and y'all probably have too, a limb will fall on the road. We'll get out and throw it over in the bar ditch just to get it out of the way so somebody won't hit it in their car and maybe have an accident. That's always a good thing. So we appreciate what the citizens are doing to help us, and they know we're doing the best we can. And when we get the citizens to help us do things, you can't beat them. It's fantastic. So with that, we'll go on to the next agenda item. We have public comment. Does anyone in the public want to address the court? Yes, ma'am, please. And you'll have five minutes to address the court. Please come to the lectern and identify yourself. And the rules of engagement, if you will, we cannot interact with you during public comment. We have to listen and take whatever rocks you're going to throw.
They won't be hard rocks. They'll be soft rocks.
Okay.
My name is Kay Reddick. I've lived here in this community for 30-plus years. In 2019, my house burned. And here in 2022, I have, after three years of battle, managed to get my house rebuilt. But on March the 14th, 2023, I called my commissioner, Sammy Freese, and left a message for him to return my call, which he did. And I explained to him what I needed is that after I moved into my house, I had some kids go through my yard and pick up to where I knew whenever I mowed my yard, I wouldn't be sowing things everywhere. And I was told I had to be... It had to be put at the front curb along the east Corpus Christi Street. And it was put there. I explained to my commissioner that I needed someone to come along there and help me pick that stuff up. I've been in my house for years. I've been fighting this now for a year. And first thing that hit his mouth was, "That's not my problem. That's a city problem." And I explained to him again that the city... I've talked to the city, to code enforcement, to the people at City Hall. And I was told I have to pay for the tractor, pay for the truck, pay for each person that was there to help clean that up. And I'm on a very tight, fixed income. I could not afford $500 to $1,500 to go out there and pick that stuff up. The commissioner also informed me that it would be my builder's responsibility. No, it is not. It was my responsibility to have already taken possession of the house. And this is what I cleaned up after I moved in. So it was not my builder's. It was mine. And this was on March the 14th that I talked to him. He told me at that time that he would look into it. He would drive by, and he would get back to me. Well, about four or five days later, I saw on Facebook where Commissioner Lenny and Officer Guerrero had done some work around the Skidmore area. And I called them just to see if there's any chance that they knew of anybody that would help me. I called them on March the 14th. I'm sorry, I lost. I talked to them about a week later. And it wasn't. And they said, "Kay, don't worry about it. We'll take care of it. We know somebody that'll do it." I said, "Okay, no problem." Well, I had gone down to Ranance Pass to take care of my great-grandchildren, who are the love of my life. And when I got home, all that trash along the front end of my house was gone. And I found out through the grapevine since that Commissioner Lenny and Officer Guerrero went by there after they had put in a week's... I mean, a day's work at their regular job and cleaned that up for me at no charge. And I can't thank these two gentlemen enough. But here it's been... Today is March the 27th. Commissioner, I have yet to hear a phone call from you. I don't know if you've driven by my house to please all that that's out there, but I appreciate you not helping me. And if it takes... If there was one vote out there that would take your place on sitting on this Commissioners' Court, and my vote was the deciding one, trust me, Commissioner, you would lose. Because if you can't help out your people inside your city limits that's in your voting precinct, then why should any of us come back and vote for you to keep you on this Commissioners' Court? And I will do everything in my power to help you out the door this election year. Officer Guerrero, Commissioner Lenny, thank you again for all the help you did for me and me not even being in your voting precinct. And if there is any way that I could move into Commissioner Lenny's precinct or he comes to my precinct, trust me, he'd give my vote because he helps people hands down with nothing, nothing in return. And it has just been an awesome thing to go out there and notice, look out my front yard and see that my stuff, that all that garbage is gone. And it makes me even prouder to live here in B County, not so much my precinct, but here in B County. And to have Commissioner and code enforcement officers that are willing to help us out beyond after they put in full day, and then they go out there and do this work at night after they've done a full day's work. Again, Commissioner, thank you. Officer Guerrero, thank you for both of your hard work, and I really appreciate it. Sir, and I appreciate your time. Y'all all have a very blessed day.
Ms. Reddick, thank you very much, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Number seven. Anybody else for public comment before we go to number seven? Following items are administrative and administrative, Commissioners' Court has been furnished documentation for each item, and all such items have been acted upon one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by Commissioner and County Judge. Move to a group. A second. Any...
Well, I have my financials. If y'all have any questions on them or if you wanted me to go through anything.
I saw the collections for the...
The tax collections did go up. I know last month, when I turned them in, we were short. And the tax collector did say that she was entering some receipts. So obviously, they were entered because now we're over, which is good, which is... should be expected.
Any questions or comments, gentlemen? We have a motion and a second. All those papers say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Item number eight. Presentment of Texas A&amp;M University School of Medicine by Ms. Roxanne Casas and Mr. Mason Dana.
Dana.
Dana. We're at your service, sir.
Hello, everyone. My name is Mason Dana. I'm a fourth-year medical student with Texas A&amp;M, coming around, going around Texas in rural areas to see what it might be like to live in practice as a physician in a rural area. Thank you all first and foremost for hosting me and letting me hang out in Beville. I appreciate that a lot. And a little bit about myself, I grew up in Sugar Land. I went to the University of Texas and studied engineering. Decided to go to medical school, and I'm in the inaugural class of a joint degree program, including engineering and medicine, where I'm going to get a master's in engineering. The thought process is to come up with devices in medical areas that could help low resource settings. And so one of the projects I worked on, for instance, was for people... During the COVID pandemic, when there was a ventilator shortage, we came up with a ventilator that costs around $1,000 to help 90% of the COVID patients. And that was a partnership between Houston Methodist and Texas A&amp;M. I'm interested in working in a rural area, family medicine, doing a little bit of everything. I'm happy to get my first choice in residency, where I'll continue my training in College Station. And I just wanted to join this program to get to bounce around a couple towns. There's a Rural Health Initiative at Texas A&amp;M to help the medical need in these areas where there's less physicians present. I've been able to go to Mason, Junction, Brayden, Savla, Lano, and now I'm going to be finishing my journey with the week here in Beville. So I'm excited to be here, and thank you all so much for y'all tossing down.
Thank you. I want to acknowledge and notice Ms. Roxanne Casas. She is very, very active in this recruiting, trying to get folks to come to work here in B County in the medical profession. I appreciate you taking this gentleman around. And if there's anything the court can do to help y'all do anything, let us know. We stand at your service.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Any questions that y'all have?
No, I think it's great. Thank you for coming and assisting us and...
Considering me.
Yeah. And the curriculum that you're taking, I think, is pretty awesome, both in engineering and medical side, the dual responsibilities. It's pretty great. We need more people like you.
We're going to sneak off into the west when we get into the clinic.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you all for being here. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. We'll move now to approval of emergency budget adjustment to Roden Bridge Department for road maintenance. Let's get a motion and a second. I have some information to give to the court.
I'll make a motion.
A second. We have a motion and a second. What we have, gentlemen, as we all know, the price of everything has gone up. The Roden Bridge Department is doing their very best to get roads ready for the final seal coating of the rock. They ran out of money. And correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Mosser, they've already sacrificed a vehicle that was in the budget to try to get enough money to move forward. That's gone, and they can't move forward on doing the roads that we've... Mr. Gonzalez and I went to several roads and said, "You've got oak limbs over the roads, and the court remembers this." We said, "You need to get these trimmed because we're going to come in and do these things." Now they're beginning to ask, "Okay, y'all said you were going to do them. When do you think you'll get to them?" We have no money for this. And what this is, an emergency appropriation, it's a budget adjustment. It's not a lot of interest, where it's going to come out of the taxes, one thing or another. And I've conferred with the auditor. I've conferred with Ray Gonzalez, our road administrator. We can find the funds. We think they're there. Mr. Gonzalez, do you have an amount that we can look at, sir?
Yes, sir. I talked to Mr. Gonzalez about it. It's $300,000.
$300,000?
Yes, yes, sir.
Because we have... I know the roads that come to mind right off is the Bronco Lane, Shady Lane, Lenny Lane, that whole area over there. And I know y'all have some too that are... They've gone through, and they've gotten them ready to go. And if we don't go ahead and put this material on, we'll lose what they've already done. So it's very important that we... Do you hear Madam Mosser? The funds are available?
Yes, and the next Commissioners' Court, I'll have prepared the budget amendment to submit to the court. I did not for this court, just because I wanted to hear how the court wanted to go with it. We'll be adding it to line item 020610351, which is Roden Bridge's paving materials. And we'll be using a local government code 111.041, Section B.
Any questions that the court might have concerning this? We feel this is an emergency. Needs to be done.
No, I have to agree with you. The cost of everything is just skyrocketing, materials, lumber.
And available. Yes.
So now that's.
One of the most important things, like you said, they've already started it and if you stop now, you're going to lose everything. So you're going to be in the hole more so by trying to start from zero again.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes, and, and, uh, just the, the fact that, uh, last year we were paying sixty-eight dollars a ton compared to this year, a hundred and twelve dollars a ton. So that's, that's, that's what causes it, uh, causes it.
Plus your transportation costs is.
Yes, and this is just your home. Uh, your rock, your own, that's, that's, that would not fault.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, uh, all of us against, same time? Thank you very much, gentlemen. It's very important and, uh, Ray, I think everybody's, you know, right behind you.
Thank you.
Uh, number ten, approved appreciation proclamation of B County Dispatches. You know, I think this is yours.
Yes, uh, yeah, gentlemen, I'd like to, uh, make a, uh, proposal here that we table this until our next session.
Okay, Mike, got a motion to table? Second. Got a motion to table in a second? Any other discussion? All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eleven, approved submission of grant application for the Local Border Security Program FY two thousand twenty-three to the Office of the Governor. This is the Sheriff's Office. Uh, item, is this routine business?
It's her put in for every year.
Do we have a motion?
No.
Motion? Second?
Second.
Motion and a second? Any other discussion by the court? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, carries unanimous. Thank you very much. Number twelve, approved submission of grant application for the Homeland Security Grant Program Operation Stone Garden, OPSG twenty-two to the Office of the Governor. This is also pretty much routine? Have a motion?
A second.
Have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, unanimous. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Number thirteen, approved Commissioner's Precinct Report for Election Code forty-two point zero three one to determine if the county election precincts comply with sections forty-two point zero zero five, forty-two point zero zero six, and forty point zero zero seven. Ms. Warnock, this is your item, ma'am.
Thank you, Commissioner Laura Warnock, Elections Administrator. This is the, uh, report that I'm required by Texas Election Code, uh, forty-two point zero three one to present to Commissioner's Court each, every two years. I tried to do it every year, just to kind of get y'all heads up of where you're standing. It's based on the number of voters in your voting precinct. It cannot combined being five thousand, over five thousand off, uh, uh, voting, uh, there, voters registered. Uh, I gave you a report that shows your total number of registered voters and then if you'll notice that in the non-suspense voters, that's the one you're going by. The suspense voters don't get counted on this. And a suspense voter is somebody that is actively registered, but we've gotten some type of return mail on them. They're eligible to vote, but we always get a corrected address, et cetera, like that. A lot of those happen. I wanted you to know the suspense voters normally don't report this, but I'm going to try to start including that in the report each time. That gives you an opportunity, if you're coming up for office, you know, you've got people in your area that maybe have sent back a jury summons that still live in your district, you may want to touch base with some of those and kind of give you an idea of what's sitting in your area and stuff. Um, if I had to answer any questions on this, it's just a kind of a housekeeping thing that we have to do, uh, require every two years.
Move to approve. We have a motion, second and a second. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Any questions for this young lady?
Thanks for calling in.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, passing unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Ms. Warnock.
You're very welcome.
Number fourteen, approved request proposal twenty-two slash twenty-three dash zero zero seven, recommendation to reject all bids on the B County Time and Water Supply Corporation Water Waste Water System Improvements Texas Community Development Block Grant, number CFC dash twenty-one dash zero four seven eight. Madam Auditor, this is your item.
Yes, we, um, we are putting, um, we, we are rejecting them because, uh, they are not within, um, budget, so they're, uh, they're tightening the scope and putting them out separately.
Yes.
Y'all make a motion to approve?
We have a motion, we have a second, second. For the record, uh, the available budget was eight hundred fifty-five thousand. The bid came in at a million, five eighty-three, nine ninety.
That was the lowest bid.
That was the lowest bid.
The lowest bid due to materials and, um, everything going up. It's within the scope that was staked out.
Yeah.
That was the lowest bid that we received. So due to that, we are rejecting these bids and submitting the lowest scope.
And this, this is part and parcel of what we just did with the Roden Bridge. I think we discussed this several meetings ago, like two, three years ago, with all this money that's out there floating around. Everything is going up and everybody's trying to get the same stuff, the same engineers, the same materials, and it's, uh, I appreciate it. There's those SB, SB seven, running.
Not that we've been, we.
Yeah, no, that would cut them out. For the large difference.
We have a motion and a second. Any other further discussion, gentlemen? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, passing unanimous. Thank you very much. Number, let's see, fifteen, approved fiscal year two thousand twenty-two B County Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, ACFR, for year ending nine thirty twenty-two, presented by Singleton Corporation PC. Ms. Choppa?
Um, no, well, actually, uh, Mr. Preston Singleton.
Mr. Singleton. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. And you all are moving at lightning speed today. I'm glad I didn't get here any later than you.
No, I am too. I am too. I was looking out for you.
You have one?
Thank you.
One more to the judge, sir. We'll be sure he gets it. I'm sure he'll want to read it when he has time.
Yes.
He better.
It's late night reading.
Absolutely.
Great stuff.
Be careful of that for you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
All right, well, thank you, Commissioner, for having me this morning at your meeting. I'm Preston Singleton and I'm a partner with the county's independent external auditing firm, which is Singleton Clark CPA. The results of the fiscal year twenty-two audit, and, uh, take you, uh, briefly through the, uh, county's annual comprehensive financial report, which you, uh, now have the for you there that I passed out to you, uh, for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. And this is the, I'll point out that this is the, uh, thirty-second year that B County has gone, uh, the extra mile in producing its financial package and included the extra components in there that, uh, qualify it to receive a, uh, certificate of excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association Canada. And so that's, that's very good that the county does. And it's a, it's a very large packet. As you can see, it, it spans a hundred and sixty-five pages. And then also tucked in the back are a couple of stapled reports, which, um, are the required state and federal single audits that we had to do on selected, uh, grant programs. And then also our, uh, letter to the governing body, which, um, always accompanies our audits. So it's a lot of information and I, I know you want me to go over all of this content this morning, right?
Absolutely. We have all the time in the world, so just take your time. Take your time.
Actually, no, don't, don't worry, I'm not, not going to do that. As the governing body, you want the expected summary.
Yes.
Um, let's start out with the, uh, independent auditors report, which is where I, I would like to start. And that's right up front in the bound packet.
Page one.
Page one. It's going to be, uh, the regular number one, not the Roman.
Yeah, the after the Roman world.
We'll pass the Roman world through actually. Page one. And I like to start here because this is really the main purpose of an annual financial audit. It's for the, the audit firm to issue this report, which gives, uh, independent third-party assurance that the financial statements within this packet appear to be accurate and appear to generally accepted accounting purposes. And state law requires that all governmental entities, uh, receive a report such as this on their financial statements, um, each year. And so that's why, uh, you hire CPA firm, and so we, we came out and we went through a systematic process of examining the evidence behind the numbers within these financial statements. And, you know, that's a, uh, big process of, uh, looking at a bunch of documents, records of course, and all that. To try to give us, um, um, us the ability to make these statements that we make in this report on page one. And the main statements that we make are in the first two paragraphs within, in what's called the opinions section of the report. Because that's what we're doing. We're now giving our opinion based on the evidence we saw that we believe that financial statements are accurate. And, and so we do that, and I won't read, read those paragraphs exactly, but just paraphrased, it does say, we believe the financial statements in this packet are accurately stated and done so in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And so that's, uh, very good to be able to say at the end here. And so now that you've got your required assurance from CPA firm on the accuracy of these financial statements, I next want to take you to, uh, in and look at one of the main exhibits in here, uh, where I want to show you what fund balance, uh, the county looked like out of September thirty, twenty twenty-two. And it goes to page twenty-nine in the packet for that. Page twenty-nine. And while you're going there, I'll just say this fund balance, you probably know, um, fund balance is really the best measurement of the financial health of a governmental entity. And looking at the fund balance of B County will tell us how much expendable reserves the county had available to operate in the near term as of the date of these financial statements, which is, that's from September thirty, twenty twenty-two. And so if you made your way to page twenty-nine, it should say at the top, the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, uh, budget and actual general funds at the top. And the exhibit's called that because it's going to show us all of the, uh, good things. And for example, it shows us, uh, in that column of numbers going right down about the center of the page labeled, um, original under the budget, budgeted amount of heading. That original column shows the budget as the court adopted it for the general funds before the year started. That's the budget you start with at the end of the year. And then the next column labeled final shows the budget as it's ended after all the amendments that you all approved, that the court approved during the year. And then finally, that, uh, the third column labeled actual shows how the financial amounts actually ended up for the year after the year was over. So let's run down that column. And so that column in the top section shows that revenues of the county came in at just over sixteen million dollars, total revenue. And that is primarily coming from the property tax, the very first line, um, of that section. And, and the property tax line makes up about sixty-five percent of your overall revenue. Uh, moving down that column, expenditures in total, money out of course, uh, came in at just over, uh, twelve point three million. And those were, uh, being, or were spent primarily in, in, you know, functional areas that county spend money in, such as, uh, first three, the major area of general government, uh, public safety, and the judicial function. And so just from, uh, regular operations, revenues exceeded expenditures by almost three point eight million. That's shown in the line just below the total expenditures. Um, then however, in the next section down in the section that I just labeled other financing sources and uses, and in that section, you've got some transfers in and transfers out. The main thing happening in that section is there were, there were transfers out of about three point seven million. And those transfers out were primarily made up of a transfer sent over to the jail construction fund, about one point five million to get things wrapped up over there with the jail, with the jail construction. And then also one point three million sent over to the Roden Bridge. And so after that transfer, um, activity, uh, the net inflows, uh, for the general fund overall are shown in that third line from the bottom, labeled net change in fund balance of two hundred and ninety-nine thousand. Fund balance increased after it was all said and done by two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, uh, to have it end at the very bottom line of six million, four hundred and forty-nine thousand. And so the county had that much in financial reserves in, in its general fund out of September thirty, twenty twenty-two. And I can tell you that's a very good fund balance, um, level for, for B County and for a government entity. That represents right about six months worth of expenditures in reserve for B County. You've got about a six-month cushion in your finances and, uh, I would say, I would recommend to have at least, try to have at least three if you're at six. Um, okay, let me just take you to one more, uh, location in the documents here. And that's going to be, uh, in one of those stapled packets that I mentioned tucked in the back. Those, you want the larger one that is labeled, uh, state single audit, state, state single audits on the, um, cover page. And it's, uh, such state there, but this is actually, uh, the federal one is also stapled behind the state. It's in your state and federal audit. And these, in the, in the first one, they're labeled state. If you could put the page thirteen of that. Make sure you don't go to page thirteen of the federal ones. Okay, so if you missed page, uh, thirteen of that, state single audit section, I should say, schedule of findings and question costs at the top. And this is just an overall, uh, good overall summary of the audit results. And in a, in a financial packet that doesn't go out and get the, uh, GFOA for significant excellence, this section's normally in the main, the main financial packet. GFOA refers to me, uh, separate packages like, you know, staple packets. Um, anyway, so we have it here, uh, and it just starts out at the top saying that the type of auditors report issued is unmodified. And that's the one that I pointed out to you in the beginning, that's on page one of the big packet. And that unmodified terminology is, is the word, is the terminology for, uh, the good clean reports on the numbers. So it's good to get the unmodified. Um, it goes on to state that we did not identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in the financial internal controls of the county, which is very good. And it also goes on to say, we did not identify any non-compliance, uh, material to the financial statements, uh, which is also, uh, very good. Those would be more serious items that we would have to report publicly in here and we, again, do not have any of those.
For the fifth year? This is the fifth year? No finding?
Yes, you did very, very well. And I'll just point out, if you put the page to page fifteen in that packet, if we did have findings, they would be listed up in this section on page thirteen. And again, we do not. And so, uh, it's really a great audit, again, uh, this year. Unmodified report, fund balance at six months worth of expenditure and no audit findings reported. So I just want to thank all the departments in the county that helped us get the audit completed and issued again on time this year. And, uh, if you all have any questions about anything, and the whole hundred and sixty-five pages, I, most, most of the docs skipped over, right? I'd be glad to try and answer any questions you might have.
Great job, our auditor's office.
Thank you. This is a big, um, a big report for us, one of our big, um, major jobs in our office. And, uh, we just appreciate everybody's cooperation. It's a team effort. And, um, we work really hard, um, to get, to not have findings. For the first, um, three years, um, of my, of being in this seat, we, we did. And so we've really cleaned up a lot and we really tried very hard to keep everybody in compliance and, um, have a good report like this. And so we've really cleaned up a lot, and we really tried very hard to keep everybody in compliance and have a good report like this. I appreciate it, Kristen.
Good job, April, and your team as well.
Thank you, sir.
You don't listen action item? Do we have a motion?
We approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? And once again, it's the auditor and their team that shine, that they shine brightly. And we appreciate all the work that you all did and your presentation. We have a motion and a second?
I'm sorry.
Further discussion? All those favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Same sign? Motion carries? United, thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you very much.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your time. Be careful.
Thank you.
Move to item sixteen. Approved contract for the generator installation of the Pettis Mud, CDBG dash DR number twenty dash zero six five dash zero one six dash CO five six between B County and Martin Electric. Ms. Rennie, this is yours, ma'am.
So this contract was included in the agenda packet, and this is just to finish out this grant. We are here at the end stages. We already have the generators. So this is the installation of those generators to finish out the work at the Pettis Mud wastewater and wastewater. So we're moving right along with Martin and Lundrick as the engineers.
I noticed that amount is thirty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty cents. Do we have a motion, gentlemen?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll say. A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those favors say aye?
Aye.
All the same sign? Passion United, thank you, Ms. Rennie. Thank you, ma'am. Number seventeen, American Rescue Plan Status and Projects. Mr. Lenny, sir, do you have anything on, that we need to bring up on the ARP?
We don't have anything other than what was discussed last meeting. Um, John, we got anything on electrical? Have you heard anything yet on that? Uh, only thing I did hear was, uh, I know they went and checked that big panel on the side and said that there's one, I think it was a six hundred amp, that's not being used, that-
That's the one that lets you know about-
Yeah, that one that, so we'll have to put in more breakers and whatnot. We have a breaker that will, is not being occupied and we can use to run that EOC and whatnot. So that'll be a good deal. But other than that, I've contacted Mr. Mercer, and he just never gets back. And the last time I did talk to him, he said that he should have the plans. They should be a hundred percent complete, and he's supposed to be here-
No, April. It was at the first meeting in April.
Just start going out for bids, give it thirty days.
Because he's gonna bring both of them. He's gonna bring the, not only the tax office-
Right.
But he's gonna bring the EOC. When I talked to him last week, he said it was ninety-five percent complete, and he's gonna present it to the court this month.
Was it April? Did he say April, or he said March?
He said he's gonna bring it to the end of, well, last time I talked, he said bring it to the end of March, so they will have all of April to go for bids.
Through their, their ARP.
Yeah.
So Commissioner Lenny, when you said it doesn't get back to you, is that phone calls? Or is that him not being able to meet his deliverables?
Every time I text him, you can see where he's read my message. And I, I didn't get on to him, but I kind of talked to him about it the other day. It's like, I see that you read my messages, but you never respond, yes or no, or, you know, any direction. And, uh, he says that's what he does. His secretary said he does that to everybody pretty much.
And phone calls aren't worth calling direct or sending them even?
I called him, like I said, last week, and then it took him about three or four hours to return the call, but he did return the call. Yeah, later. He didn't, he didn't return it. He might have been busy, I don't know.
Right.
Schedules.
Well, you were, you were asking about an invoice also, so that might be why.
Oh, yeah. 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 Whether we were paid that invoice, so he-
Oh, yeah. He did return it.
Yeah, he did return that.
Yeah, you want to get paid it. Yeah. No, he is, I mean, he is difficult, whether it's the emails, that phone call, it's very difficult to get a return on it.
Commissioner, I did send you an email this morning, and I don't know if you saw it, from the electrical engineer that was there that day. So I ordered it to you, to John. He had some questions on some other electrical stuff.
Okay.
Okay.
Good.
And Smickel is also on the, um, I, I know we have an update from Smickel on the AC unit.
Yes, just that, um, they're trying to order the part five this Friday, I believe. Um, but they, they've also been one that we've had a little bit of miscommunication and just-
A lack of communication.
Lack of communication, I should say.
So I made a statement at our last commission meeting. Who has ultimate accountability for this contractor?
We do at the court.
At the court.
So all four of us?
All five.
About five of us?
Yeah. You can pick a poll and challenge him whenever you want.
The only thing I would caution anybody about is if it's not, if you're not real familiar with what's going on, be careful about the questions that you might ask them, because it may derail things, because we've all been involved with contracts and stuff. And, and as commissioners, if we walk in and say, you know, I think, golly, that ought to be green. Well, they may start painting it green, and then we get a change order. So be careful how you approach them.
Yeah, clearly, clearly, in, in my previous experience, I'm very familiar in managing contracts. You know, understanding the scope of work and his deliverables are extremely important. That's why I brought that up at the last meeting. Obviously, so, yeah, you don't want to go to a contractor and, you know, you don't want to have scope creep because someone said anything. But that's where I was getting back, you know, someone has to have the ultimate accountability of the thing for that particular contract, so you can drive towards a common solution.
Well, it's just like Commissioner Lenny is, the EOC, he's got his fingers wrapped around-
In the sandbox.
It's just, and Commissioner Farias has the, the extension of the IT. It's best to let them continue with that, because there may be some things that happen between here and here that you or I may not be aware of, and they're on it. And we can ask them, we can say, hey, you know, you need to do this, or hey, you want to check in with this. That's my recommendation.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just proposing a question, you know, who has ultimate accountability?
Ultimate accountability is the court.
The court.
Collectively.
Because if there's something that goes on, like if I discuss something with Mr. Mercer, I can't make that decision on my own. I gotta take that question or that action item back to the court to vote on it the whole.
And I, I thought he was gonna bring it this meeting.
That's what I-
Because he said he wanted all of April to work on the, the ARP.
Yeah, that's what I understood, too.
The thing that concerns me is, it's come up twice in court today, it's about having more money for a road bridge, and then the, the contract down at Cannon, is it a reason we thought the EOC Center was gonna cost this much? And every month we go along, it's going up. And, and hopefully, we, you know, we keep telling folks, sorry, we can't take any more projects. Hopefully, we've saved back enough money to fund what we're gonna do.
Well, the last two meetings we've had with Mercer, he's already, I know Mr. Cantu was in on one of them. He said, hey, it's already gone up, you know, a certain amount of dollars just in, in three months, and we hadn't even gotten halfway through the plan.
Well, who knows? But I spoke to him the last time, before we went out to that meeting at the expo. Uh, he actually apologized to me and thanked me for not being mad at him and not getting on to him for this going so slowly. And I told him, I, I said, I understand, you got things to do, you got procedures and whatnot. But I said, we need to light a fire under whoever it is, you need to light a fire under it. So because I get questions in court about what's going on, I have no answers to give them. So we need to get this thing moving. You know, we were supposed to be breaking ground in January, and here it is, almost April, and we're not even got, gone up a bid yet. And he's like, I know, I'm sorry, and thanks for not getting upset with me.
Well, he's also got a courthouse generator, so he's had three of our projects on the way.
And one last week, correct. So is it, is it possible for him that, you know, that we could take an action item to, here's the next meeting, to give us an overview and update of all the projects?
Well, we just call him, or call him and tell him, he really needs to be here.
Is that something he can do?
Typically, when we have asked him to be here, he typically shows up.
Yeah.
He's been, he's been, honestly, been really good.
He wants to go to the changelors, aren't he?
I think it'll be good for all of us to get a clear understanding as far as, you know, where we are with these projects and provide us some, and so, uh, I guess we'll make a motion here that we take an action item. Do we have him at the next meeting?
Well-
Yeah, it's not on the agenda this time.
No, he's gotta be part of the agenda.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
No, we just call him and tell him. I mean, like I said, by him apologizing, he knows that they're running low. He knows that. He knows why he wouldn't say, you know, appreciate you not getting mad at me and blah, blah, blah. He knows that they're taking their time more so than they should be at this point.
Something that you might mention to him, you know, he's extremely busy. He can do it via phone, if nothing else.
Yeah.
I know that's-
I, I think he'll, he'll, he'll come next. He'll, he'll show next.
For the IT build-up, he did send the structural engineer and the electrical engineer, he said, I mean, they, they got here when they should have.
You know, so, yeah. We had one, we had one cancellation meeting with the electrical engineer at the EOC. Yes. And then the next time, we, he showed up. So that meeting has taken place, and it's already, you know, everything has been looked at and whatnot. They wanted to see, which we did find out about the breaker panel. Uh, they wanted to also find out, uh, that, that AEB comes off the three fifty-one, right?
San, San Pass.
Or San Pass. And to see how much is actually coming in, because you guys, uh, you got transformers on both sides and whatnot. So they want to see what, you know, what's actually coming in and what's being used between the expo, the arena, and all that stuff, so. Uh, I don't know if the San Pass people have done their job yet, but he's aware of it all.
Yeah, I think it'd be great. I think just for me, as a newbie, I'll, I'll stay here on the commissioner's court, just understanding, you know, some of the challenges that he's running across. Is it resource? Is it funding? Is it not able to acquire the correct staff to do that? Because we are, you know, in a staff crunch, and getting the right people to do the job could be a problem. But it would be good for us to understand, you know, what are the challenges he's having. Uh, and that's part of the contract. I mean, he has, the contract I read last week with generators, very well laid out, very well articulated. A lot of deliverables that he's supposed to deliver on. And then my question was, you know, who's gonna ensure that those deliverables are being met? So it'd be good, good to have an overview for that.
Right.
That was Matt though, that you were talking about. And that's, that's Thornoff, engineer.
No, there was, there was the, the electrical one, the generators, that, that package. Might have been a meeting before.
That was the Thornoff.
That was a Thornoff? Okay. Okay, I'll take that back. I will pull up that other contract, take a look at it as well.
We'll, we'll get it to you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else on the ARP, gentlemen?
Thanks for correcting me.
Do we have any other projects pending right now in ARP?
This is the big one.
Yeah, this is probably the big- I know we're holding off on doing anything specifically because of the, the cost that we're going to be in the end. But I don't know if we had-
And we're continuing to work with the fire department on getting their, you know, money spent, getting, um, getting documentation on that money. So that, that's a continuous process that we're-
Some of them, we had a couple of-
Well, Vino has spent just about all of theirs.
Yep.
Vino spent about twenty-seven thousand, um, line twenty-eight, the data spent about twelve thousand. And we're attending the other fire department to see if they have anything that has spent. We just don't have documentation for that yet.
Yeah, I think we have one or two projects we share software, but it's still pending.
And they're still-
They're going out. The money's obligated. We're, they're going out.
Right, yes.
We haven't taken on anything yet.
No.
So kind of getting back from our formality, just to make sure that I'm clear, please bear with me. So we'll need to put in two, uh, agenda items to have Mr. Mercer come provide a report, and then we can have Ron and Lathan.
No, we can just call him.
You can come in.
Yeah, we said earlier, they should have been agenda out about-
Well, for seventeen, I think that'd be great for him to talk for our, well, I mean, for the ARP.
Yeah.
That he can be here to talk about ARP.
Either by phone, like you said, or in person.
Whatever, whatever works for him, because he, he's extremely busy. We're not the only client.
He's got other-
And it's not an action item. It's to have him be here, and he can talk on his ARP.
Yeah, I will say that. Because B County has three of his projects, he's got three of B County's projects right now. But, uh, let's see, the biggest project would be Commissioner Lenny, so I guess he'd be the one to contact us. Hey, can you give us an update on these projects, all three of them?
And we'll have-
And do it by phone or?
We'll have ARP also, Jason and Angela, we're gonna talk with them, and we'll have them reach out, too. So we'll double.
Yeah, there you go.
Get in from all directions, huh?
Yeah. We'll get in here.
And I've already made one phone call to him this morning, so he's already got a message.
He knows, or we're on.
He knows, we're thinking of it.
Well, if he does call you back, if I can help, and put a bug in his ear about next meeting, please.
I'll do it.
Maybe in both years.
Anything else, ladies and gentlemen?
No, thank you for the discussion.
Uh, we have no executive session. Before we close, I'll remind everybody, now, those of you in the audience that, that don't have anything to do this afternoon, we have another meeting at two o'clock in here. We're gonna, a special call meeting at two PM, so we'll be here for that. And we welcome all of y'all to come back also. If there's nothing else, number eighteen is adjourned. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Any discussion? All those favors say aye?
Aye.
Close, same sign, United, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you all for being here.